Thank you.
That says that if you did get a lot of money there.
Oh, so this is the ordinance.
No, that's the paperwork I have to give you by law.
Fix your collar. Fix your collar.
And we do need to suspend the rule and do all three of these.
Well, we'll work out the council.
To get to Board of Works.
Hey. I got my collar.
Don't get you more.
No, I've got it.
I think that's a few to do that.
It's gotta be a sweet little thing.
Because I'm being heaven forbid. I know that so many people are.
Lots of people been asking.
How many people in the?
Last year, one.
You probably know who it was.
Never know. Weird.
I have six o'clock.
Okay, call council meeting in order if everyone would stand for the pledge.
The pledge, agents to the United States of America and to the Republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, blessed decisions of this body, guidance tonight, and the future as well. Amen.
We have real call.
Mr. Stangle?
Here.
Mr. Ravellette?
Here.
Mr. McNeese?
Here.
Mr. Lau?
Here.
Mr. Gornau?
Present.
Mr. Salters?
Here.
Mr. Grove?
Here.
Mayor Yocum?
Here.
Adoption's agenda.
Uh, make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
Got a motion by President Salter sent by Vice President Grove to adopt the agenda as presented.
Question?
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, the agenda is adopted and need approval of the January 11th minutes.
Make a motion to approve the January 11th minutes.
I'll second.
Got a motion by President Salter sent by Vice President Grove to approve the January 11th minutes as presented.
Question?
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
And those minutes are approved by vote of seven to zero, petitions, memorials, remonstrances. And then we'll go to committed chair reports.
Uh, I have a Pantheon Operating Board update. We, uh, we met on the 19th. Uh, some news coming out of there. A big date, February 25th will be kind of their first, uh, big, big event. It's the AgTech Showcase Startup. They've, it's actually kind of cool. They got, uh, four companies coming in and they'll be tasked with a, a problem and they'll solve that problem hopefully. Uh, but what, what I thought was interesting was, uh, those four companies, one from Florida, California, Indianapolis, and Brazil. Uh, those four companies that come in here and from my understanding, they'll, they'll give them some kind of like workforce problem or irrigation problem and they'll work to find a, a solution to that problem. So it's kind of exciting. Uh, there are 14 paid memberships today, five students, two offices, and, uh, one reserved desk. So that, and that is ever-changing. Uh, some of those, uh, day passes aren't counted in there, so, um, pretty much it.
That, um, AgTech event is gonna happen regardless, like they have it planned online just in case.
It will be one way or another. It will either be all via Zoom or in, uh, somewhat in person. There, there will be invitations sent out to that, so.
Okay.
The Urban Economics Association met last Tuesday on the 19th. And we had three business owners and two homeowners, uh, come forward to ask for financial assistance on repairs to their property. Uh, UEA, uh, committed to nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars total to these five individuals and their assistance for the repairs. Also, the Public Safety Committee met last Thursday with the Vincennes Fire Department members. And, uh, this was to discuss a potential merit system, uh, for the Vincennes Fire Department. A few, uh, firemen are, uh, concerned about, uh, and, and are afraid of, uh, changes or changing to the merit system. We answered those questions, tried to put those fears at rest. Um, we made one small step toward progress. They are going to decide which system to go with, so we can start working on that. It's either a, uh, it's either a, a open system or a state system. And, um, they're gonna have that before next meeting and I hope to have another meeting very soon. Thank you.
And kind of add on to that, Councilman Stangle, I think the discussion was really good too in that meeting. Um, yeah, a lot of things were clarified and kind of gave us a good direction, so thank you for doing that.
Uh, we had an RDC meeting. Uh, RDC was, uh, giving updates on the Main Street Phase Two and Three. Those are progressing, but more importantly, I think that, um, the Lincoln Heights, what's known as the potential Lincoln Heights subdivision, uh, the knee houses came before us to talk about that. They had made a request. That request a little, at, at least on the, on the surface, looks a little beyond what the RDC is capable of, uh, because of what we're committed to in other projects around. Uh, but we, uh, did pursue with really, um, a, a little more in-depth in the financial look to, to see if in the future, uh, maybe not this particular project, but another project similar, uh, would be worth it and be able to, uh, I guess, pay for itself, fund itself, uh, for the invest- investments that you make into it. Um, just a return on investment there. Um, RDC is, is doing that and I will have more of a, uh, an update in, um, in about a month. That's it.
Anyone else? Not reported city officers? Public comment?
Dan Wrightmeyer, 14th and Vigo, County Council. I just want to commend the city. Last meeting, I requested for the city water departments to take a look at the drainage on South 15th Street. The next morning before I got up, I had a message from Hunter Pennell wanting to meet me. And we met and they're going to do something with the drainage and that's gonna help it tremendously out there. I want to thank whoever called him and thank him for his, and he's been fantastic all along. I just want to commend him for that. And I also listened to the Board of Works meeting earlier tonight and I was amazed at your numbers of the calls you make. It, I, I've just flabbergasted how many. And I know myself, I have called at two in the morning to say there's some suspicious activity, a loud car going by three, four times, and they've always been there within just a couple minutes. That's all I got.
Okay. Thanks, thanks Dan. Any other public comment? Then we'll move to old business. First up is business updates.
All right. Uh, key thing we got, uh, for our businesses or from what I was able to reach out, it's slow but steady, but, uh, that's not a bad thing. All right, slow but steady wins the race, right? Uh, the key thing is, we gotta remind people to continue, uh, shop local. I mean, that's the big thing. Obviously, this is that quarter that we're really concerned about. Uh, they've got one promotion going right now and we just finished all of those videos. That'll be our gift card promotion that we hope that'll be a good push, so looking forward to that. But make sure you guys check in with our local businesses. They're doing really good things. They've all got kind of unique things going on right now, but, you know, it, obviously it slowed down a little bit from the holidays, but things are still, uh, going well and we're gonna keep moving forward and that's a very good report from our local businesses.
Okay, next is county metric updates.
All right, so this one's kind of a, a mixed bag. Obviously, we've been in the red the past two weeks, but if you look at, um, a lot of our other numbers, a lot of our other numbers have trended down. Um, and when you look at our, you know, our new cases, they've been, you know, in the teens or, you know, even today, they've been single digits today and yesterday. So you look at a lot of those things and hey, we've got some good things going our way. Um, our positivity, uh, started to trend down and that was the one that pushed us over. Uh, our county metrics measured on two big metrics and that's cases per a hundred thousand and that's your seven-day positivity rate. The cases per a hundred thousand, every county in Indiana was at that three level. And so the key thing the mayor and I kept a look at was that positivity. And if you hit over fifteen percent, then that puts you in a three category and then that bumped you into a three total, which would then make you a red county, which is where we've been. Uh, we have seen our positivity rate drop and hover right around ten, eleven. It was even nine today. Uh, so we're seeing that positivity rate drop, which is a really good thing. Uh, testing is still high and good and that's a very good thing, so people are getting tested. We're notifying those people that are positive, getting them out in quarantine. Um, and I, I think probably the best news is the, uh, great job that Knox County's doing with vaccines. Um, when it comes to, uh, distributing vaccines, uh, we're number one in the state right now. So that's great to know that that's happening. You keep those numbers up. And the thing that I've kind of been paying to, paying attention to is how many people were recovered from this and how many people were getting the vaccine? So then how many are, you know, getting the, uh, antibodies from the vaccine and how many have naturally got it? If those numbers continue to go up, then we're gonna get closer and closer to where we want to be. Uh, but I would expect better news on Wednesday. I don't want to say good news because we're still having to deal with this, but when it comes to Wednesday, those metrics that we've been looking at, I've been trending down. Uh, hopefully we get a good report Wednesday. I think we will, but we just gotta remember those basics. And those are wash your hands, wear face covering, socially distance, and the key one that I want to emphasize, if you feel sick, stay home. I mean, that's a big one that, uh, a lot of us, eh, you know, years past, we would, uh, it's not that bad. I'm gonna come in and go ahead and work, but we don't want to put people on that kind of risk, so. Um, and if you look at the state numbers too, the state is really starting to hit a spot where we're not seeing as many cases per day too. So let's kind of put that in perspective as well. Like, I've seen a couple of days where we've had two thousand total cases in the state. We were at like six to seven thousand there for, for a while. Um, and a majority of the counties are orange. We're starting to see yellow counties again, which we haven't seen yellow counties in a while. So, um, this is not the end, but we gotta keep focused and get to a good spot. Um, you know, we're almost done with January and then that means March is soon here, which means more outside time, which is absolutely fantastic. So that's where we're at when it comes to our COVID updates. And then the mayor and I obviously will give our update on Wednesday.
And go along with that. I know the county's doing tremendous job with the, the clinic, but also the hospitals doing a lot of, a whole lot of these vaccinations, so commend both of those groups and encourage everybody to do that. Okay, new business ordinance two, twenty twenty-one encumbrance ordinance.
Um, make a motion to read and approve ordinance two, uh, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by President Salter sent by Vice President Grove to read and approve ordinance two, twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance two, twenty twenty-one, Parking Recreation Department, total to be encumbered from Fund 204, thirty thousand eight hundred and ten dollars and thirty-two cents. And also from Park and Recreation, a total of one hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars. And that's carrying over from twenty twenty to be used in twenty twenty-one. Have to encumber it.
Kathy, is there anything else you want to add to that for us and then you want it to be passed tonight? Is that correct?
Correct, yes. These are just, uh, payments that were made in twenty twenty-one, but it was using twenty twenties money.
Does anyone else have any other questions on that or?
Question?
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, first reading of ordinance two, twenty twenty-one passes.
Make a motion to read and approve ordinance two, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Got a motion by President Salter sent by Vice President Grove to have second reading of ordinance two, twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance two, twenty twenty-one, encumbrance ordinance using twenty twenty money for twenty twenty-one, uh, or being paid in twenty twenty-one. Thirty thousand eight hundred and ten dollars and thirty-two cents and also one hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars. The ordinance, uh, indicates pool maintenance, bond payments and things like that. The bills came in and were paid from twenty twenty money.
Discussion?
Question?
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, second reading of ordinance two, twenty twenty-one passes.
Make a motion to suspend the rules to have third and final reading on ordinance two, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Got a motion by President Salter sent by Vice President Grove to suspend the rules to move forward with third reading.
Question?
That's me. Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, we will move forward for the third reading.
Make a motion for third and final reading for ordinance two, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by President Salter sent by Vice President Grove to have third and final reading of ordinance two, twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance two, twenty twenty-one, encumbrance ordinance for the Park and Recreation Fund and, uh, to move money of thirty thousand eight hundred and ten point thirty-two and one hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars for park board expenses with twenty twenty money.
Discussion?
Question?
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, third and final reading of ordinance two, twenty twenty-one passes. Next up is claims.
Make a motion to pay claims in the amount of four hundred and eighty-six thousand two hundred and two dollars and ninety-eight cents.
So proud. Second.
It only took a year.
Got a motion by President Salter sent by Vice President Grove to pay the claims in amount of four hundred and eighty-six thousand two hundred and two dollars and ninety-eight cents. Is there any questions or, on claims?
Question?
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, the claims are paid. Anything under miscellaneous?
Um, when we, uh, apply for the Community Crossings Grants, JP gonna come and present to us what roads he's doing like he typically does?
He has turned in the application and he doesn't want to release the roads until after we get approved or not approved because the last time we sent them out and they're, when you put it out there that these roads are gonna be paved and then they're not paved.
And that's problematic.
Calling and saying, hey, I thought my pet road was getting paved, so.
So when we do get approved, will he come?
He can get you the information.
All right, if he, if he could do that, that'd be fantastic. All right, let's put that down.
Okay, public comments again.
I got a tour of the new EMA Mobile Command Unit. Wow. That is a fantastic piece of equipment and has to be the best piece of equipment in the state of Indiana. And it's to be used for the city and the county, the schools, everybody. John Streeter gave me a tour today. It is just fabulous. If anyone gets a chance to take a look at it, take a look at it.
And I've asked John that at some point I want him to bring that vehicle up here because the city did pay.
Right.
Through the Caris dollars, so. And he's willing to bring it up here for everybody to see, so. And you're right, it is an amazing.
It is.
Setup and, yeah. Okay, for the good of the order.
All right, let's start off. Uh, Councilman Grove, what do you got? Looking through your notes there?
Well, no, I, I actually am changing what I was.
No, no, you do.
For the good of the order.
I've got a whole nice one, Brian. You do, you do. I've got, I've already changed mine. I got a better one.
Ooh, a better one, huh? So, uh, one of the big ones is the, uh, renovation on the Harrison home. Uh, started already. If you go over there, it is fenced off. Um, but that's gonna be amazing. I mean, for, it's already one of the most historic homes in the nation. Uh, we were actually in, um, South Carolina in Beaufort and going through the Verde House and they mentioned the Harrison home and, you know, it's, it's pretty cool.
I think some of the details and I'm, I'm gonna, I don't mean to jump on yours, but some of the details where they core sampled the, even the fireplaces, those things, to find the original paint, to be able to go back, just a tremendous job by that whole entire group.
Yeah, that group is, is very impressive. They've, they've done a lot of other renovations like that, of course. Um, but that, uh, I saw them at the Historic Review Board Meeting and, uh, very impressive. Really look forward to that. Also, two, two more buildings on Main Street I wanted to point out, the spa spa. It, if, if you've noticed, man, the architectural, uh, painting that they've done, uh, and saved that stuff, looks, looks fan- you know, just fantastic. Uh, and then also the building next to the Harrison building, which is there at the corner of Fifth and Main. Uh, the building right next to the big one i- is another building that's gonna be saved. Uh, I know Sherquain is, is starting renovations on that, so, man, Main Street just, you, you think it's, it's peaked, but man, there, there's very few buildings left that need renovated.
Mine was three.
I know, well, I had to search, you know.
Big week for District One. Uh, Mr. Gornau?
Uh, yeah, speaking of Harrison, um, President Harrison, unfortunately, unfortunately, the Harrison, Harrison Hall, fifty-year-old dormitory was tore down, uh, recently for, for safety reasons and, uh, just, uh, and of course, oldest dorm on campus, but, um, they're gonna make green space for that, uh, or possibly, they don't know what the plans yet are, but it was kind of sad to see that building go. Hung out in that dorm a few years myself. Um, now Rotary Point, the, a college in Washington Avenue, I don't know if it's because I don't get out a lot at night or I'm just not observant, but that Rotary Point is, has different lights shining on it at different parts during the night. So I think it's really a nice, uh, aesthetic to that, that, that corner, that center of town. Uh, shout out to the Street and Sanitation Department. Going to church Sunday morning and saw the trucks out with salt and, um, uh, taking care of the streets so people get, uh, back and forth safely. And gonna revert back to last year, I reported a home on, uh, Minneapolis that a, a young couple had bought and it was a fire, damaged by fire and they finally finished that project up and it's ready to, to rent or sell. I thought that was really, it's, looks really nice. They really did a good job on that. And I know, um, Mr. Snyder worked on and helped them, you know, get through all that and everything, so appreciate that, your department. That's all I have.
All right, Councilman Stangle?
Yeah, I just got a couple of comments. The lit caution signs and stop signs, that's at Thirteenth and St. Clair, near, uh, Clark's, um, across that land, crossing, yeah. And, uh, down by Greg Park, I get out pretty early in the morning working and it's still dark and, man, you can really see those signs. They really draw your attention to them. And I think it's a fantastic job getting those signs up. And also I really wanted to say something about a he- healthcare system here in Knox County, how wonderful job that they've been doing, uh, with COVID crisis and recently with the, uh, and recently with getting the vaccines out. I've talked to several people that's gotten the vaccines, not one negative comment. Uh, it was, they said it was a great experience. They glad they, they got the vaccine and, uh, I can't wait to get mine. Thank you.
Councilman Ravellette?
Oh yeah, one thing that really caught my eye recently was the bright new blue canopies at Ducky's Car Wash on Hart Street. There's several of them there in a row. They really look neat. They're very well, uh, uh, installed. I know it's for advertised, for vision there, but it does, I think, make the city look neat, bright and pretty. And, uh, also I want to, uh, say, uh, thank you to Becky Bledgway for being one of the, uh, volunteers at the, uh, Vaccination Center. We appreciate your help and all the volunteers out there.
Councilman Lau?
All right. I, I will tell you that, uh, as I've visited with people this last week, um, I can't tell you how many people, um, had come through either the hospital or the health department and just said, what a great job and a wonderful job that they were doing and how smooth, you know, we, we hear all over that people are having issues and not, not Knox County. We are doing, they are doing a great job. Um, everything's smooth and I think we can see that, uh, as people get down and, you know, and it was, it was interesting because as we were out, um, it was nice to be on the other end where people were, had already had the shot and visiting, you know, um, and saying, hey, you know, this is it. And then once they got the shot, they were trying to educate others about that. And I think that's part of the reason, um, Knox County's doing so well is their, their great portion of education and helping people understand why we need to do it. So, way to go.
All right, Councilman McNeese, I'm looking forward to this one.
Uh, I've been on the board at Pace Community Action Agency since 2014 and this year was certainly one of the biggest challenges we've had as a, as a group. Pace, for those who don't know, do weatherization, heating assistance, Head Start, Health Connections. And we do that mainly in four counties, Knox, Sullivan, Green, and Davies County, but we also do in Vigo, Gibson, and Lawrence County. There is some services we provide. Just to go over some of the things that we did, uh, in the last year, just, uh, one, Head Start is in-person, uh, but it is just the kids that are ready to move into kindergarten next year. Uh, big step for them. Uh, the other thing that, uh, we gave out, or we didn't give out, we did twenty thousand dollars in small business loans to businesses here in Knox County. We have an available, um, thing, a pot of money that is available for small businesses to borrow on and that is designed to go to businesses that maybe are up and coming, starting up and maybe can't get financing at a financial institution. So that is out there and increasing that. We also give out scholarships, uh, and gave out scholarships to three Knox County, uh, kids this year in the amount of five hundred bucks each. And then also, uh, probably one of the coolest things right now is, uh, the Dr. Bertha Proctor, who is the CEO at Pace, is now, um, CAP Law, which is, uh, Community Action Partnership Law Group. She is the National Chairman for that group, representing Vincennes, Knox County, and Pace to, uh, to our nation. And she spends a lot of time now in DC, um, but it does bring us some very positive, uh, looks back at our community and the work that Pace is doing. So if, and, uh, also weatherization, if you have a home out there that could be weatherized, uh, be sure and give them a call. If there's somebody that needs heating assistance, give them a call. Uh, they're there to help. That's it.
There you go. That was good. Proud of you. Uh, one of the big things, one of the big things that you, uh, we've kind of heard throughout this time is people missing out on events and missing out on things. And I think, uh, last week when we started hearing about, you know, the rendezvous, putting their plans together to, uh, make sure that they have that event and that they can do it and do it safely, um, I think this is gonna be the beginning that we start to hear about events starting to come back. And this is something that our community does pride themselves on. I mean, there's usually not a weekend that goes by that there's not something big, medium, or small happening in our community, obviously, pre-COVID. Um, and it's, it's nice to be able to hear those discussions are starting back up again about those things that are big from something like the rendezvous, but even things like, uh, just simple high school homecomings happening again. So, uh, people have got that mindset. There's a lot of hope out there and just the thought of, you know, in four short months, the rendezvous being back after having, having to miss, I mean, that's, that's something to really look forward to. Um, it also, you know, reminds me, hey, we gotta stay focused and keep, you know, pushing the good word about all the stuff that we've been talking about since March. And we can get there, uh, but it's, it's exciting to be talking about those things. It's gonna be exciting to hear about those things and those plans moving forward. Um, and I can't wait to get back to, uh, dare I say, that normal that we were used to before this started. Mayor, you got anything for us?
Uh, just to go off, I want to thank Dan Wrightmeyer, Mr. Wrightmeyer, for bringing that to our attention. Uh, I did get a call after last meeting about that problem. And it's good when somebody reports it because as a city, we don't see everything like that. Uh, we encourage people to report stuff like that as well as, uh, junk vehicles, trash, grass, anything so that we can get it taken care of. Also had another individual from a neighborhood watch meeting that said something about a house across the street from them and within a week it was taken care of, but that's another case of if the city's typically notified, we'll take care of things and, uh, and glad to take care of, but we also appreciate it being reported. And the other thing is on the Harrison home, if you remember, three of you up here agreed to give money towards that, you know, a couple of years ago for that project, and that is a great project and you tried to see. Yeah, a couple of years ago for that project and that is a great project and we're trying to see it moving forward. Okay. Nothing else. We have a motion to adjourn.
Some of it's,
We are adjourned.